Okay, I'll call this public hearing in order. We can start with a pledge allegiance to the flag.
Our pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Let's read the notice. The Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Thursday, May 30, 7:00 p.m. at the East Windsor Town Hall. The purpose of this hearing is to obtain public input and comments on the East Windsor Charter Revision Commission draft report that was presented to the town on May 15, 2019, by the Charter Revision Commission. You can find a copy of the draft report in the town clerk's office and on the website. It gives the URL of the website. Before I start, I think I'd like to just say a few words. This process is an ongoing process. It started about a year ago. The Charter Revision Commission worked very hard to bring us to this point. I applaud their efforts. On Wednesday night, May 22, the Board of Selectmen and the members of the Charter Revision Commission got together and discussed the draft report of the Charter Revision Commission. And after the discussion, the Board of Selectmen will produce a draft report and give it back to the Charter Review Commission. The next steps will be on June 6. The Board of Selectmen will write a draft report. The Board of Selectmen will hold another public hearing. After that draft report is written, we will advise the Board of Selectmen's draft report and revise it and give it to the Commission after the second public input. Also, on the table, there's this. And what this is, is, well, I asked each of the Boards of Selectmen members to give me their suggested changes. And that's what we're going to go over on June 6. But these are my changes so far, as far as I got. So these are not the draft report that the Commission gave us. That's on the website and in the town clerk's office. We also had a public hearing on it. But this is pretty much it, a lot of it. I didn't do all the ones in the -- in fact, if you look here, this lists all the items that the Charter Revision Commission gave us. There's 13. And I numbered the tops of the pages in green, the numbers that go with each one. So like, the first one is the town attorney. So you can look at that and it'll give you a pretty good idea of what we're talking about when we're talking about a particular item. Also, the state statutes require that we hold this public hearing. After reviewing the information in the board, I think the Board of Selectmen will probably change the report a little bit. And just as always, we'll follow Robert's rules and don't speak until you're recognized and then you can have the floor and shouldn't be interrupting. And treat everyone in the room civilly and with respect. Okay, having said that, we can start. Do you want to talk about any particular one or you just want to go through them? How do you want to go? This is a public hearing, so I'll just call in somebody. Yeah, Paul.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not going in any particular order. I'm really impressed with what Ted's produced. Difficult, difficult process. At one point, the Commission discussed changing the default budget change if the budget fails three times to 0 percent. And hoping that will get people to participate more. And it's -- that's been taken away as a percentage. It's still 2 percent. There was a suggestion made by Kathy Philidoo that it be 10 percent. And I'm totally in favor of that. It sounds facetious, but it's not. If you want to get people to participate, we had roughly a 14 percent registered voter turnout for the budget on the second referendum, which is pretty weak. People are not paying attention. We have very few people deciding what we're going to do. I do my best to encourage voters to participate. We're not getting the message across. And I do believe that if the default after three failures was a 10 percent increase, which sounds outrageous, but I don't think people would allow it to happen. I think that would get their attention so that they would actually come out and vote. That's one of our problems. The 2 percent was put in because the budget process went on and on and on with referendum after referendum and not getting a budget. So that was put in as a default. It hasn't worked very well because we've been stuck with this 2 percent level for years. And it's very painful. It's an inappropriate number. And to continue with it, in my mind, is a big mistake. I'd rather either do away with the default entirely and have referendums until we have a budget, or put in a number that will get people to participate.
Other than that, how do you think we could get their attention? Other than something like that, how do you think?
Maybe signage in town. We don't promote what we're doing very well. But that's not a charter item.
I understand.
It has nothing to do with the charter.
Yeah, I understand.
The charter is what you do and you live with it. It's the law. And I really believe we need to do something serious. Now, passing that would probably be extremely difficult. That isn't the point. The point is, if we continue to sit there with a 2 percent default, we're going to get a very poor turnout and we're not getting the pulse of the town to find out what do they want. We're sitting there out there with a $40 million budget and people aren't even saying yes or no. They're saying nothing. Yet it affects them greatly and I find this to be troublesome, which is part of the problem with the charter as it's written. So the change, in my mind, would be give a number they can't live with and now participate because I'll have to.
Okay, thank you. Further public participation or public input? John.
Well, Paul makes a good point about signage. And I remember early on in our discussions, we were hoping to address signage, that we put in the charter that there would be a minimum notification of the public by way of signs around town. We just never got that far. But I do think the Board of Selectmen can do that on their own. And, you know, I drive through Ellington and I know when their vote is. They have a pretty good set of signs out there. They're pretty simple, sandwich board type signs. But they're strategically located and there's an ad for a number of them. I don't see why we can't do that in this town. To dislocate them in front of the town hall and at the annex is insufficient. Most of our traffic is on the road or it's east-west through a number of roads here. So I think we could address -- I think we'd have more participation if more people saw them.
Talking about Ellington, John, I've driven through the town recently also, and they don't have a lot of signs out. They're big signs, but there are not a lot of them out. There are maybe a dozen or more around town.
Well, that's what I would think.
But, you know, the yes or no signs, we must have had dozens and dozens of them around. People had to know that there was a referendum coming up. It's a different, you know, it's different than saying there's a referendum, but certainly people knew that. But people won't turn out.
But they're private signs and they're smaller. Once you establish these are the town signs, people are going to pay attention. What's happening in town?
I don't know. I don't know.
Be interesting to see what the turnout is in Ellington with their signs.
Yes.
John Maza, 143 Winkler Road, East Windsor, Connecticut. Maybe we should put on payroll a communications person in this town that could take care of this so that we can see news about East Windsor in the paper like we see about Enfield, like we see about Ellington, like we see about Windsor Locks. You don't see much about East Windsor. That's possible that we can get somebody or incorporate it into a job, somebody that's doing the work similar to that type of person. It's got to be done. We have no communications whatsoever in this town. We have a sign, "Vote yes or vote no." What day do we vote yes or vote no? Nobody told us that.
And maybe that town administrator might be just the person to do it.
Well, that's to come. Let's worry about today. We don't know when we're going to get the town administrator.
Yeah, that's true.
You don't wait three years to do something.
I hear what you're saying. Go ahead.
Yeah, Tom Laster, 27 Wall Circle. Would it be possible to have a database of people's email addresses so we could put something out to email? Right now, as I was joking with these folks, I'm on Facebook all the time, so I keep up to date through Facebook. A lot of my neighbors aren't on Facebook, but most of them have email addresses. Is there a prohibition against using that or is that something we could use?
No, and there's no prohibition. The way that database we have is if you go on the website and it says, "Send me notices," then we get your email address. And we're -- in fact, the treasurer talked to me and said, "Why didn't we send out a blast?" And we should have. And we will for the next, just a day or two before the next -- or we could even do it twice. We could do it Friday and then we could do it before the, I guess it's the 11th is the next one. So we could do it a day or two before that. So we'll do it. If we don't do it, then we messed up.
Do you know how many people are on that are registered?
I don't know. I don't know.
You should get that counted.
Yeah, yeah.
They must have.
Further public, yes.
Charlie Norrell, 7 Grand Place. I really agree with Paul Anderson. I think it's going to take something to really wake these people up. We've gone through numerous efforts to get the word out there that there's a budget vote, be it signs, Facebook, email, flyers. The people just, they're not participating. They think someone else is going to do it. "Oh, my neighbor will take care of it." You know, the other guy will do it. And that's not happening as we've seen. The numbers just aren't there. Something needs to wake the people up and it needs to be drastic. And maybe 10 percent or maybe it's 5 percent, but I think it needs to be drastic. Another thing to the charter is I caution, if the 2 percent stays, you know, as we all know, 2 percent of nothing is nothing. So how are you going to fund these new positions that are in the new charter and get them established and on then if we're going to stick with this 2 percent ruling? You're going to have a tough time getting those new positions started ever with the way our referendum situation works now. And there's other positions and other questions, I think, within the charter that rely on other questions within the charter. And I caution, when you put those two referendum vote, that you make sure that if one fails, it's not going to affect another.
I agree. And that's actually was in the charge that we gave, the Board of Selectmen gave, the Charter Revision. Sarah.
Sarah Muska, 25 Maple Avenue. I do agree with Charlie Norrell. Having a full-time first selectman and a full-time town administrator in this new charter and then if we're going to the 2 percent, I just don't know how we're going to fund both positions. And I just caution you on keeping the checks and balances that we have in place with the Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen, Board of Ed, rather than just putting all the control in just one person or one board. My two cents. Thank you.
Okay. Yes.
Dick Peppin, Company Press. There's some more. Two comments on page four. First selectman, we go the way town administrator, we probably should go back to who like most everybody else in the state. I think there's very few towns in four years. When we got professional management, you ought to be able to rotate the board sort every two years, give somebody else a chance. I don't know if they even look at it or not, but I just agree with them. Page 13.
Dick, please, one. Do you like the idea of an administrator?
Oh, definitely. I think that's a jackpot, but you need to make some changes to make this thing work. One, I'm just going to put the selectmen back to two years, stand in an election like everybody else. And now this is the next one, page 13. First selectman position will be full-time. This is, I don't think you should be doing this in agreement with the others, that we don't really need two full-time administrators doing the same job. The first selectman's job should be to run the meetings for the Board of Selectmen and act as liaison with the board between the staff. But if we're going to hire professional people to do this job, we've got to let them be able to do it. We can't be micromanaging every minute. And the other thing is, where are you going to get the money? Professional administrators with benefits and all that is probably going to start at $200,000 a year. You're not going to dig that up out of the budget, especially with this 2 percent axe hanging over your head. It's a 2 percent increase every year. If you go to 2 percent, you're lucky to be able to fund what's going on. The way insurances and all that go up. Not willing to add new positions, you're going to be cutting positions. Okay, page 35. Sorry, I use your draft here to put all my comments on. The end of departmental transfers. Board of Selectmen, you're doing the last three months. The Board of Finance watches the budget all year. And then you're going to take it away from them when most of the transfers are done and try and do it yourselves? I think you need to bring the right word is with the Board of Finance, the people that are watching the financial ability of this town. And other bids and purchases, I think there should be an exemption in there for the state bid items. It's not mentioned in there where they're already bid by the state. Like you go to buy a number truck, the state has already put the specifications and put the bids out. That's going to be a worse bidder. You're not going to get it cheaper. Why go through all the extra work? It's not in there. It should be some kind of provision in there for what I call a state bid. Page 37. Yep, I'm at it. With oversight of the Board of Selectmen, the first selectman and town administrator should be in on that coordinate, manage preparation of the budget. You're going to have a professional person, most likely going to have a master's degree in administration. Certainly ought to be able to be part of the process. Because your first, your selectmen basically are partisans. They're amateurs. I mean, we don't pay enough to get a professional person. Bob's lucky he's retired, so he's getting paid almost enough. Right, Bob? Better enough.
I'm lucky that I'm retired.
You're lucky to be retired because you'd be starving to death. Okay, what I wish paid, 37. And then we go to 43. Okay, there we go. Back to the 2 percent. You know, the way things are going this year, we may get to see just how much devastation the 2 percent can cause. Your schools may even lose a curate nation from the high school if they go to 2 percent. And that's unusual for me speaking for the Board of Finance, Education. But we really, yeah, 10 percent, yeah, that's enough to shock somebody. The 2 percent is, got to go the way the dodo bird. It's worked fine when we were, basically, the economy wasn't growing, nothing was growing. You could get away with this. But you know what? All these little things have been weeded out over the last 10 years. There's no place left to raid. You really need to take that 2 percent and shut that one up. Page 51. The town meeting, now here, Bob's going to like me on this one. I agree with Bob 100 percent that the town meeting on this section involves appropriation of Suss $150,000 or 1 percent. It should be 1 percent. You're creating and passing a charter that may be enforced for 20 years. $150,000 today is a pretty good sum. 10 years from now with inflation and that, it might be a real small number. It may get to be a real burden. This charter is not easy to change and you're supposed to live with it anyway. Oh, yeah. Section D, within 15 days you receive a petition. And it says, "No less than 20 days to bring it." But you've got 90 days that you've got. That's two months. If you can't get something moving within 30 days, you're all wet. If this expense happens to be a problem, something needs to be done. And people, some people don't want to do it. They could drag it out for 90 days. You could be into the next fiscal year. It's way too long, the 90 days. I mean, there is a minimum time, which is what, like 15 days? But going out to 90 is absolutely, I don't know if the thinking cap was on straight that night or not. Sorry if I offended anybody on the comments, but I've been through it. I've sat up there and know what goes on. It was a tough job.
Yeah, I appreciate your comment. That's all her fault.
Thank you. I like it 1 percent.
John.
There's a lot that was made in the comments. I'll address the transfer of funds in the final quarter of the year. It's a very small amount of money that's going to be allowed. And the idea is that today, no transfers can be done without the Board of Finance approval. So we have a chief executive officer who has, in my vision of it, is he has zero discretionary money. So allowing transfers of $20,000 and no more than three of those for a total of $60,000 out of $40 million would give a little bit of discretion to the Board of Selectmen and sort of overcome some of the politics that take place of the Board of Finance's, is at odds with the Board of Selectmen. This is a case where the Board of Selectmen has a small amount of money to accomplish things, small things that they need to do. Right now, it's zero.
Okay, further?
Paul Anderson again. Comparing the $20,000 to $60,000 to the $40 million, I don't think is totally fair because we don't do anything inside the Board of Education. So we're really comparing the town portion of the budget, which is a heck of a lot smaller.
Yeah, about $15 million.
So that becomes a more significant number. That's true. Trying to keep it in perspective. Once again, Dick Peppin again. My comments on that, again, over the same issue, is we should keep the Board of Selectmen doing administrative work, which they do, and keep the Board of Finance doing the financial work with the treasurer, town administrator, however you want to work, which they do. Because you don't have your hands on, well, maybe you do. I better not accuse you of not doing your budget every week because I think I see a guy in a blue shirt that probably does, watches it real tight. But you've got too much work of your own to do without dealing with the small percentages of transfers when you've got people that do it all the time. It just doesn't make sense, sorry.
And I'll say that the transfers are oriented toward the department. So it's a department head that would request a transfer.
Yeah, but if you guys want any transfer, you can request one too.
That's true.
And use it your way through.
I just commented about the discretionary money that talked about signs, the sandwich signs. Takes money to get those. From the time I started, I felt it was really important that we have the right signage to the buildings that other towns have, like, you know, a sign that's perpendicular to the road that, you know, at the East Windsor Town Hall, that there are signage in the different villages, that there's Windsorville, there's Werles Point, there is Melrose, there is Scantic. And we don't have any money to do that. And it really, that's where I'm thinking of discretionary money, that those are really good things to do, but they're not required. And I think we focus in the budget as being what's required. And we don't do any of that where other towns do. And there's not a town that I don't go through that doesn't have that, that kind of signage. You know what I'm talking about.
Bob's got a plan and I know he's got it. I'm sure he's on his file for doing the signage for town. It just hasn't been the money to do it.
Yeah, that's where I'm thinking of discretionary.
I know his plan is right practically from day one under the Board of Selectmen. So it's almost four years old. He did all the background on it. He had prices which were lower. It's there. It's up to the money.
Yeah.
Billows, Melrose Road. We had a couple of signs. Werles Point, I just took a book up a sign over there, electronic sign. It must be over $25,000. I know where to get the money for it. Look at that sign over there. It's going to be stone on the outside and electronics. It's a big sign.
Maybe we can use some of it. Once in a while.
Just to bear to record on that, I think that was a donated sign. Your blood, they had to go through, solving and all, like you get a probe for the old comic sign. It was donated by a party, a party's unknown, but it's not any town money involved in that.
They put out a pretty detailed budget, so it's available to everybody. Paul.
So since we brought up signage and communication, to walk down this hall and try to find an office and you don't know where they are, because you have to go to the door to see the sign that's on the wall, it should be above the door, horizontal to the hall, so you can see what offices and what place as you walk down the hall and not have to guess. People spend a lot of time asking and it doesn't always work because they go into any office and ask, but they don't always get the opportunity to ask depending upon what's happened. It's a simple communication method, but it's not happening.
That's a good idea.
Not a very good way to do it.
The tax collector has taken her own initiative to show where that is.
You know? Can I go?
Sure.
You go to almost any town hall and they go to directory when you come in the door. Is where the office is signed.
You're making a case for more than 2 percent. There's no question.
Yeah. If you sign all of them, you're leaving them to nothing. Maybe you can make the cardboard sign up, put it on the easel.
The one in Hartford, Hartford City Hall, had to go there for some time. That's the way they are in there, that they're on the wall so you can see as you go with that.
Go right to south ones.
So the first one I see that put a lump in my throat, death certificates. I really like to see that happen.
South ones are actually used to have a receptionist.
Yeah, that's right.
Everyone wanted to pay their taxes.
Actually, you could get a senior person to do that and maybe reduce their taxes a little or something, but volunteer.
Yeah. Spend the money.
In a sense.
Careful if you take that idea.
Revenue, reducing our revenue. Anybody else?
Paul, please, through the district street. Starting in section 66, which is the finance area, 66 I, I'm sorry, 66 P. Language reads, "From the rise of Board of Selectmen's law grants and other state and federal programs available, it's on and other agencies and commissions and shall follow the instructions related to boards." and commissions and shall follow the instructions related to wards selected with respect to the implementation of the same." So I would question, would that apply to the board of ed? Would the board of selectmen be, you sign them on the board of ed's directives?
No.
It's not clear. And mother, this is where I have issues with some of this stuff. There's language, there's intent, and then there's opinion. So a lot of the language that we're dealing with, we'll have to get an opinion, how to get intent from the language, because a lot of this is not clear.
You'll have to be specific, Bob. But the, the finance director, um, I, I, I think, in my opinion, the only thing we wanna do with the finance director, and we're calling it a finance director, is change the name treasurer to finance director. That's all we wanna do, so.
Well, that's not what this language is.
Well, I don't, I don't think we need that language.
And going down a little further, um, next section I, purchase or cause to be purchased subject to rules and regulations shall be prescribed by the board of selectmen. All supplies, materials, equipment, and other commodities required by any office or agency in the town, including the board of education. To the extent that said board of education shall authorize him or to do so.
You're in six-I?
Yeah, that's six-six-I.
Say that again, please. Six-six?
Six-six-I.
I.
I do, I don't have to actually occur and copy that.
You have one of them?
I do, six-six.
Six-six-I, or age one, most of the parts, one, six-six-I.
Yeah.
I, police department, the police department. Who's the head? Six-six-D. Six-six-D.
That was going off the old. This is a problem that I have a red line. No, appears to not be in the, in the new language.
Oh.
I'm sorry, my, my mistake. So we can move on to, uh, six-six-A, which would be the administrative, administrative officer.
Okay.
So page twenty-two. So the administrative, administrative officer shall be responsible for the day-to-day operations in town departments except WPC and housing authority. As, as you know, the day-to-day operation of all departments would include the police department, where we have two full-time professional paid administrators now. And I can't imagine that any administrator that we may hire, within the next three to four years of training, could possibly be able to handle the day-to-day operations of the police department.
Um, there's sections in the charter revision that deals with the police department.
Right, and, but this, this goes to my point about language, intent, and opinion, opinion. This is what the language clearly states. And then there's the intent, which may be something different, so.
Do you, and, and, um, if you get an administrative officer, then it would depend on, on whether or not, uh, section, uh, six-I, the police department, and, and section seven-seven, uh, the police commission, is accepted or rejected. If it's rejected, then the, obviously, the police chief would report to the police commission.
It's, it's not so much reported. It's, it's what it says, that, that language is very clear. Shall be responsible for the day-to-day operating. The day-to-day operation of that police department is handled by the chief of.
Yeah, it's handled, but that, they report, and, and it's handled by the, uh, police commission. I don't handle anything that goes on in that police department. And neither would the administrator if, if the current report stays the same.
This, this language clearly states that the administrative officer would handle the day-to-day operations of that.
Well, that's true, so really.
So the intent, whether or not it's, it's, uh, true or not, that's, that's what the language says.
And we want to have the, these line items, when they're voted on, be voted on separately and, uh.
I don't know, I'm, it may require all this. A little of questions to be able to do that.
Well.
But that's one piece of language that, that needs to be.
You make a good point.
If there's a way, you don't figure that out, Bob?
That's, that's why we have Bob DiCrescento.
Well, I, I think Bob DiCrescento wrote the language, didn't he?
Well, but I don't think you have to say that, Bob.
Well.
Thank you, Bob. So, is there anything else?
Um, yes, there is, and there's, there's plenty more. So, um, that was one of the peculiar things there. As we move on to the police department, uh, much of the language, and I'm gonna say probably over-easier central language, that's two things. And this is regarding the police department language, not the police commission. The police department language strips the authority of the police commission, in fact. It also reverses some of the rules of the police commission and the police chief in what's in state statutes. Besides the fact that most of it, and I would say about ninety percent of it, is in violation of state statute in regards to police commissions and their authority.
I agree. Well, I don't agree with, um, I don't even understand what you said because I haven't studied it. And if I was gonna, and, and I, I will have to make a judgment on this.
I, I have.
And, uh, well, but, but I'd like to say, Bob, that if you could write what the police chief should do if he didn't report to the, oh, the police commission, and what the police commission should do if he didn't report to the police commission, that would be very helpful.
And for what reason?
So we could have the correct information here when we put it to the voters.
I, I think the correct information would be to point out the state statutes that govern police commissions.
If you don't wanna write it, Bob, that's fine.
Well, I can, I can give you some, some opinions and I can, uh, I could write some recommendations.
That'd be great. Anything you could do in writing would help.
Sure. But then, but I just wanted to point that out, that, that more than three-quarters of it is in violation of statute.
Well, and I just wanna point out, the minute I read this, I said, boy, I should get the police commission to each one of you. It would be better if each one of you guys wrote how this would, you know, and it would be better, and I will, talk to the police chief and see if he will write what he should do if he reported to you.
Yeah, and, and that would be a great idea. Um, and I'm kinda curious because none of the, uh, of the charter revision commission has ever queried anybody on the police commission about any of this one. I just might have, um, so that's on the, on the police department language. The, uh, there again, the police commission language, it, it goes the same hand and again, where it's in violation of the state statutes. And then again, there's, there's some other language that wasn't there, and let me check and see if it still is.
Police commission language is thirty-one.
Thirty-one?
Page thirty-one, that's seven-seven.
So on page thirty-one, section seven-seven, powers and duties, which is under paragraph C. This appears to be all in one sentence, I'll read it for you. Powers and duties, the commission shall be responsible for establishing police department policies and shall also have those powers and duties not inconsistent with this charter, as are now or may hereafter be imposed on by commission, by, commission, by Connecticut general statute, section seven dash two-seventy-six. Including but not limited to preparation of proposed budget for the police department to be submitted to board of selectmen and such other duties as may be imposed by the board of selectmen. The police commission, like I said, is governed by state statute. And that language is, is pretty wide open to be anything. The board of selectmen could impose any duties they may want on the police commission without any repercussion. I think it's a language that really is so open-ended and ambiguous.
So, and, I, so I'm just saying, let's leave out the sentence after the "and such duties as may be imposed by the board of selectmen." If we just let that out, it'd be cleaner.
And there again, the, it's in conflict, again, with the state statutes. Another thing too, uh, which is probably a stronger point of concern regarding the police department language.
What page are we on?
We're backing up to page, uh, what was it?
Twenty-three or?
Twenty-three. There's a good section of that language that is actually against the bargaining unit contract.
Yeah, about the bargaining unit contract.
Um, so I, I think it requires a lot more study on, on what this language actually says and does.
Yeah, now, the bargain, bargaining unit contract is really, it's done by the, the board of selectmen, and you're part of that.
Yes, yes. And, and everybody that's on that negotiation team should, should be able to read that section and be able to clearly point out what's in, in violation of the bargaining unit contract. There, I mean, there's, there's three of us here in this room right now that are on the negotiation team, and it should be rather obvious.
Why don't you clue us in?
Um, as far as the, uh, the, the police chief shall be responsible. The, the chief of police shall assign all members of the police department to their respective post shifts, details, and duties. The, the shift, uh, schedule for the police department is done in a bid process, and that's in the bargaining unit contract. You should be aware of that. That's just one point.
And that's a good point. And, and, and you have to, to put the bargaining unit contract would be a good clause to put in after that.
Then some of the other language in there, which is, uh, some of the, the shall words, which are put forth to more ambiguous language. Let's see if it's still in this copy of the world of the first one. In conflict with the, with state statutes regarding police commission, the chief of police shall be responsible for the efficiency, discipline, good conduct of the department, and for the care and custody of all property used by the department. Actually, the care and custody of all property is in police commission's hands by state statute, so.
You can always put in, consistently with state statute, and probably we should. Qualify a lot of that stuff by putting state statute in. And the number, the correct number of the state statute.
It's chapter one-four, seven dash two-seventy-six, two-seventy-seven. In the police department language, under section number two, the chief of police shall be responsible for the preservation of public peace, protection of crime, apprehension of criminals, regulation of traffic, protection of the rights of persons, property, and enforcement of laws of the state. And now that feel, that's feel-good language, and of course, we would all agree that, that, um, that's what their goal is. But shall be responsible kind of puts that into a, a different language. Let's, you know, let's just say, for the sake of argument, that somebody, uh, somebody felt that, uh, their property was, was damaged and the police didn't assault it. The police shall be responsible.
Their property was damaged and the police didn't apprehend the criminal?
The regulation of traffic, the protection of rights of persons, somebody violated my rights. Well, according to the town charter, the police shall be responsible. So it's, like I say, it's feel-good language, but it, it's not something that you could enforce.
I'll have to talk to our town attorney about that, because I'm feeling some responsibility about the town myself.
Yeah.
Maybe I should.
You don't want, that, and there again, it's, it's same with the, some of the police commission language too is very similar. And that the police commission shall be responsible for, uh, many of the, the.
So how would you, you write something to say that the person would not be doing his job if he failed to do something?
I'm sorry?
How would you write a, a term that if, uh, that, that a police commission, or myself, or somebody, wasn't doing a particular thing, that he wouldn't be doing, uh, part of his job?
Start with their employment contract.
Okay, you could, you could say, and that's good. And their job description.
That, that would be the first, most logical thing.
Is responsible for doing, could you say, is responsible for performing the duties of his job description? How would you say?
I don't know how, I, I don't know how I would try to write that in language.
Or maybe you could say, maybe not responsible, shall perform the duties in his job description.
Right, so I, I, I haven't thought about that in, in.
But you're pointing, I think what you're saying.
Language that, uh, but, like I said, I would start with their contract.
Yeah.
And, and that's probably the most logical place anyone would look.
Good. And, and I think what you're saying is saying, be responsible is almost like a legal thing, like they could get sued.
Shall be is, is definitely, um, there's, there's not much words that can get around the word shall. So it, it puts you in a, in a position that you may not be able to hold. Should the, the chief of police not be able to protect the rights of a citizen, but it says he shall. You know? It's, you, you can't put all that, uh, onus on chief of police.
Okay.
And then another good language too, on the police commission language, page thirty-one, paragraph B, citizen matters. The police commission shall be responsible for the investigation of citizens' complaints against the members of the police department in accordance with procedures established and published by the police commission. That's not bad at all. The police commission shall be responsible for maintaining good relations between the police department and the East Windsor community. So here we are with the word shall again, and if somebody in the community, um, does not have good relations with the police department, we are now held liable for that?
Well, I, you bring up good, you bring up good points. I think it would be interesting to see what the state statutes say, because I think they do have to kinda say what the police department should do.
They, they do, they do.
So, maybe we can steal their language.
Bob, I'd like to comment on, you know, you said about the police chief not being, can't be responsible for the safety and etc. and so forth and so on.
Oh.
Yet, over time, over time. Yet, over time, over time, you know, what I've always heard is that, you know, we need a sergeant, because we need to have supervision, somebody responsible for those people on the road. We need a lieutenant, because we need to have another level of responsibility. We need a captain, another level of responsibility. We need detectives, another area of responsibility for that kind of work. We need a deputy chief to be responsible for the day-to-day. So that term has been used as long as I can remember, and that's what everybody says that's in police work. Now, I've got to have this person to be responsible.
Internal within the hierarchy of the police department and how the department runs. But what you're asking is for the police chief or the police commission to be responsible for the whole community.
Ultimately, he is the top.
It's a different situation where we have.
He is the top official and.
Right. And the figure of his command, that's, that's who he's responsible for.
Yeah.
It's a hierarchy and it's a command structure within the police department that you talk. But what this language is trying to do is to take that hierarchy and structure and put it upon the whole community. It's too ambiguous, I think. And I think, like I said, it's feel-good language. I hear what you're saying, and I would agree that we would hope that the chief would do everything in his utmost power to be, some of them will protect our rights, and I'm sure he is, and I'm sure he does. But to write into language in the charter, I think, is a mistake, and it's too ambiguous.
You will agree that the chief is ultimately responsible for, for his department.
His department, yes.
For his department, and he interferes with the, with the public.
Yeah.
He's, you know, the buck stops there.
Pretty much. The, the chief and the commission are, we do have an officer that handles public relations within the department, but to put, to put it to writing in the town charter that the chief shall be responsible for everybody's rights, I don't think you can do it legally. I think it's too ambiguous, and so it is, it's just a.
Okay.
But like I said, play the devil's advocate on it.
I don't agree, Bob. I really do believe that it's important to be able to have one person who we can go to and say, he is responsible, and one person, not, not a public relations guy, because that's too long. You got, you know, when I ran a program.
So let's play devil's advocate, advocate. My rights have been infringed, and according to the town charter, in writing, the police chief is responsible for my rights. I'm going to sue the town. And this language will probably give me a pretty good layup on that. Think about it. Language is black and white. Intent is another thing, and opinion is a whole other thing. So we need to be careful with the language we use.
I like the idea of having a person who is responsible. It makes it easy to identify problems and to work the problems.
So are you saying, you're thinking of things that are outside of an incident or something related to the police? Is that what you're thinking?
Right, right. The language in here, and I'll say it again.
You'd have to have.
The chief is responsible for the rights of the citizens, and this, he's responsible, he shall be responsible.
But you'd have to have causation that the department, he would have done something to violate those rights. It wouldn't be because I walked on somebody's lawn. You know, it has to be.
You can play with the language, but it's just something I think you need to explain there.
Okay, well, Paul.
Paul Anderson again. What this sounds like is put in extreme detail in the charter where this is already addressed elsewhere, and maybe that's where the problem comes in. Do we need it there, or do we just need to have it? So we have a police chief who has a contract, he has a job description, it defines what he's responsible for. Why do we have to say it in more than one place? Or do you want to do away with job descriptions and everything comes in the charter? You don't need a job description, because if you take that job, read the charter, it doesn't make sense. Job descriptions are totally recognized globally. That's what you do for a living when you take on that job, and it's there. So are we trying to do the same thing twice? And in a document like this, that only gets reviewed every five years, you put yourself in a bind. If it isn't what you want, there's nothing you can do with it. You're stuck.
I'm sure that job descriptions need a whole lot more detail than this. It better be.
That's not the point. The detail here may be way beyond what's needed.
I think you might be right, so we have to review.
And I think that's what has to be looked at. If we already have a defined, don't define it in two places. When you define something in two places, they will come in conflict at some point. Now you have a problem for no good reason. If you already have a complete description of the job, of everybody on that force, of what they do, you don't need to put it in the charter. You already have it. So just live with it, and you're done. I, I think maybe that the intent is good, but duplicating efforts is bad, because no matter what it is you do, if you have it in two places, it will come in conflict. And when it does, you've got to change one or the other, and that's a problem.
Charlie?
No one's job description should be in the charter. Number one, the charter lasts too long. If you need to change that job description, then you can't have it in the charter. A job description should say, it's totally separate from the charter. If the charter wants to reference that that person shall follow his job based on his job description, fine, but you shouldn't put it in the charter. And I think what Bob's trying to get at is that this language doesn't make the police chief responsible for his job, it makes him liable to his job, and that's a huge difference. This language can be led to interpretation to make him liable and wind us up in court, and that's what you don't want, and that's what Bob doesn't want.
Sounds good. I appreciate your input. Do we have to beat this dead horse more?
Well, just to give us more context. Should we put in language in the charter to say that the public works director shall be responsible for the upkeep of all roads, hedge spaces, snowblowing? And there again, shall, so should we put in the charter that the superintendent of schools shall be responsible for the good education?
Balancing the budget.
How hard do you cope with this? It doesn't fit in the charter.
Okay.
Dick Pippin. Uh, this is fine in Danny, it's a lot of ceramics. You know what? For what we're doing, our police chief, and our superintendent of schools, and our public works director, they damn well should be responsible for their duties. Who else is going to be? The board of selectmen going to get blamed for everything?
I don't think we have to put it in the charter.
If the police chief doesn't do his job, the board of selectmen's going to get blamed?
Oh, yeah, he will.
I've got a feeling, it's pretty well-written. You know, with the liability-wise, I can't answer, you've got professionals for that. You certainly want to keep the town out of, out of court, if at all possible. It's expensive, quick. But if not going to define the duties of these guys, hey, the police chief's responsible for the day-to-day running of the police department. Absolutely. Why else do we have them? And the same with the public works director. Oh, I'm not going to plow the ropes today, because I don't feel like it. No, it's his job to get it done. Needs to, that needs to be spelled out. Just like your jobs are spelled out. Certainly the fire chiefs that got responsible for their fire departments, I know that for a fact, like Benner.
I don't know, this input, are you going to argue?
Well, what's in the charter is very general statements. Outside of that, you'd have very detailed job descriptions. Now, when there's a conflict, as Paul says, you've got redundancy, the charter takes precedence over, over ordinances or job descriptions. The charter takes precedence over. If there's, if there's inconsistency between them, it's the charter that prevails. Let me change the subject. The term violation of state statute has come up many, many times, and state statute frequently says, unless inconsistent with law, and what they're really talking about is the organic law of the town. So there's a statute that describes what a police commission does, but if you have different definition of that in your charter, then the charter prevails over state statute. So it's, it's not violation of state statute, it's inconsistency with state statute. And when there's inconsistency, then in many cases, as long as the state allows it, then the charter prevails. So that's what we're trying to do, is make it organic law within the town official.
Okay.
Page fifty-six, please, twelve, please, please. It says right in there, any action part of the section of charter should be held and bound by a corridor, complement jurisdiction. It's right there, the statement clause. So anything that charter is in violation of state statutes, charter, I mean, state prevails. And anything of federal, the federal prevails over the state.
But in many, many of the statutes, you will see, unless inconsistent with law, and they're talking about organic law.
It's not consistent with law.
As we all know, as I'm sure the chairman and the attorney know, Connecticut's a home rule state, and being a home rule state, we can write whatever we want into the charter, and regardless of state law at all, the charter prevails. Would you agree?
No.
In some cases, state, state statute.
That's what home rule is. So what it allows you to do, being a home rule state, is we can write into the charter things that are not egregious, we enhance the law, but things that may not be consistent at all with state statute, we certainly can do that with Connecticut being a home rule state. We certainly can. But I would question is, why would you? State statutes have been established by our legislature.
And that's exactly why.
Well, in order, in order to balance the powers of government and to make, so that municipalities can govern in a fair and equitable manner, that's why we have state statutes.
So if I see the attorney's.
Yeah, I agree. When you're through, are you through?
Yep.
Go ahead, Bob.
Just for the benefit of the public and the board of selectmen, there's certain principles that apply to state law versus charters, and the first principle is we are back to home rule state, and this goes back to the nineteen fifties, and the courts have given municipalities broad discretion in fashioning charters to suit local purposes when the subject of the charter provision is a matter of what's called purely local concern. When it's a matter of statewide concern, then no matter what the charter says, state law trumps the charter. It's an easy example of that in the Freedom of Information Act. You cannot write a charter provision that's in conflict with the Freedom of Information Act, because that set of statutes have been determined freedom of information, and all that involves is a matter of statewide concern. Matters of local concern, according to the Connecticut Supreme Court, are those matters in the charter that govern the organization, the case is used as phrase, the organization of local bodies to suit local needs. The Wyndham tax association case is the case that is the last word from the Supreme Court on that, and that dealt with a, a apparent conflict between the charter provision and Wyndham that had to do with the finance commission and how they did their work and set referenda in that statute which allows towns to have finance provisions, boards of finance, I'm sorry. And the court held that because the matter of how Wyndham shows to set up the powers of its board of finance, it was a matter of purely local concern, and the charter, you hear the word preemption a lot, the charter provision preempted the statute on that, those matters of purely local concern. Now, there's other things that boards of finance do that are of statewide concern. When you sell bonds, you're selling them to an international market, and you can't have local charters telling you how to do that. So the board of finance has statewide concerns that they have to follow by statute, as does the police commission, because the work of the, of the police department is governed in large part by state statute, certification of officers, and, you know, entire set of statutes on criminal law and enforcement of criminal law. Those are matters of statewide concern. How you set up the division of responsibility between town administration, police commission, police chief, police department, you are free to do that in your charter. Police commission statute says, towns may establish police commissions by ordinance with the following duties, which you've done here. And once you've done that, you have a statutory police commission. If you choose, and it's a policy choice, you don't have to do this, but if you choose to define your police commission in your charter in a different manner, so long as you don't intrude upon those matters of statewide concern that the police department does every single day, you're free as a municipality to establish a different scheme of responsibility between town administration, police commission, and police department. Many towns do this. Secondly, to the extent that anything in this charter and any provision is in violation of collective bargaining agreement, there's another statute that says collective bargaining agreement trumps charter. So every provision of every charter is subject to a provision of a collective bargaining agreement, because that is a matter of statewide concern. So it's, it's important to keep these principles in mind, because you can find lots of examples of a possible conflict between the charter and something the state statutes say. And virtually every municipal officer has, has duties that are statewide concern. The assessor, the tax collector, registrar, voter, if you go through the list, building official, there's a set of statutes that tell that official how to do their work. How you organize the management of the work is a separate issue, and that's where you have latitude of the Wyndham case and other cases to set up in your charter your administrator scheme that you choose to do it. And that's what the charter commission is proposing here. Whether or not to do it that way, or exactly the way it's worded here, is a policy choice that is the subject of this proceeding and further deliberations by the charter. You could virtually delete "be responsible for" from every line where it exists and not change the substance of the provision. I, I heard, last thing, liability. There is, all the responsibilities described here in the charter for these officials are discretionary, discretionary upon the official. In other words, it's a discretionary duty of the police chief or any police officer to enforce the, the criminal law. He has to use an officer's discretion to do it. State law says for those discretionary acts, municipal employees and municipality are subject to municipal immunity. Kerma probably tells you a lot about that, about when you go to the CCM conferences. So there is no liability created by your choice of words here. It's simply a, a draft inconvenience to say, chief of police should be responsible for the preservation of peace. It's just a choice of words that describe the management responsibility, and if there's a better choice of words that made it clearer, then that would be perfectly fine.
Good. All right. Further public participation. I think we'll review the words. Paul?
Okay. I'm going to continue on this line a little bit. I think it's very important to understand that if we already have defined what someone does as an employee of the town.
as an employee of the town reason, we don't need to detail it in the charter. It's already defined. I think it's an effort that isn't necessary. Personally, I think things should be as concise as you can get away with. Not as elaborate as you can possibly make it. It's a compromise issue, but the less you say, the better off you are typically. So if we review the responsibilities of people as it's already understood and in writing, duplicating that is an effort that has no value. That's my approach to this. I'd like to see this, uh, document turn out to be something easier to read and, uh, less inclined to be in a situation where there is an interpretation. Who takes precedent? Why bother? If you didn't say it, it wouldn't even be an issue. You wouldn't have to have the issue. Nobody would have to say anything or question it. It would just be, here's where we do it. We don't do it here. We don't have to do it everywhere. Simplicity is usually a better choice.
I, I think we've heard you and I agree. Anything else? Going once? Twice? Okay, I, I, if there's nothing more, we'll, we'll end the public hearing. Okay, thank you. I think it's been very constructive.